Councilmember Baker?
Here.
Councilmember Blanchard?
Here.
Councilmember Kodeckel?
Here.
Councilmember Platt Onson?
Here.
Councilmember Stedman?
Here.
Mayor Protem Turbrak?
Here.
And Mayor O'Dwyer?
Here. First order of business is the approval of the agenda. Is there a motion to approve tonight's agenda?
Motion to approve?
It has been, uh, a motion has been made by Mayor Protem Turbrak?
Support.
With support from Councilmember Stedman. Are there any changes, additions? Hearing none. Ms. Prince, would you please call the roll?
Blanchard?
Yes.
Kodeckel?
Yes.
Platt Onson?
Yes.
Stedman?
Yes.
Turbrak?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
O'Dwyer?
Yes. And now we come to the agenda at the invocation. I see Reverend Laurynell Brayley here with us this evening. Would you please stand for the invocation?
Today, April 2nd, is the first movie theater opens in Los Angeles in 1902. While realism in motion pictures has its value, movie theaters are the great dream templates where we can be inspired to live lives of heroic greatness. Also, a day to celebrate the joy of having your own theater in your home through the miracle of DVDs. Have fun with film today. Let us pray. Holy Dream Maker, we give you thanks that you are always with us. We ask your blessing on these members of the Berkeley Council, that you would give them holy dreams for our city, that you would inspire them and give them the courage and the ability to inspire the rest of us in Berkeley to see the possibilities that await us and to, to look for and to know and count on your presence with us and to move forward in joy and not in fear. Amen.
Please remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Now, we come to the Citizens' Comments portion of tonight's meeting, where you may present your thoughts on issues that are not included on tonight's agenda. Councilmembers will not engage you in discussion. If your concern needs to be addressed by a member of city staff or a department of the city, please sign your name on the sheet provided at the clerk's table. You may speak on a specific agenda item when it is being considered. When you come to the microphone, please state your name and city of residence. Well, seeing no one coming to the Citizens' Comments section, then we'll move on to the Consent Agenda. Ms. Prince, would you please read the items on tonight's Consent Agenda?
Item number one, Approval of the Minutes. Matter of approving the minutes of the regular meeting of the 34th City Council on Monday, March 19, 2012, in the joint meeting between the cities of Berkeley, Huntington Woods, Oak Park, and the Berkeley School District on Tuesday, March 13, 2012. Item number two, Warrant Number 1252. Matter of approving warrant number 1252.
Is there a motion to approve tonight's Consent Agenda?
Move to approve.
Has been moved by Councilmember Kodeckel?
Support.
Support by Mayor Protem Turbrak. Are there any corrections or additions? Ms. Prince, would you please call the roll?
Kodeckel?
Yes.
Platt Onson?
Yes.
Stedman?
Yes.
Turbrak?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
Blanchard?
Yes.
O'Dwyer?
Yes. Now, we move to tonight's regular agenda, and since there are no items of recognitions or presentations, we'll move to item number two. Ms. Prince, would you please read item number two?
Motion Number M-17-12. Matter of approving Doug Penny to the Woodward Dream Cruise Ad-Hack Committee as a Chamber of Commerce representative.
Is there a motion to approve M-17-12?
Move to approve.
Moved to approve by Councilmember Kodeckel?
Support.
Support by Councilmember Baker. Ms. DeSessa.
Thank you, Mayor, City Council. This recommendation comes to you from the Chamber of Commerce. Mr. Penny has been involved in his profession for over forty-plus years, and his occupation is that in the field of marketing. He indicates that although he is not a resident of the city of Berkeley, he is a member of the Chamber of Commerce. As such, his experience, as I mentioned earlier, he has forty-plus years with regards to sale. He has been an eighteen-year member of the, of the ROCC and serves on the Community Relations Committee, and he's also worked on the Berkeley's, Berkeley Chambers Art Bash and Pub Crawl. With regards to information as to why he feels that he should be selected, he states on his application that he has a proven record of working on events. In 2007, he was voted Royal Oaks Chamber of Commerce Volunteer of the Year. I certainly believe that this is an excellent qualification, Your Honor. I don't think Mr. Penny is here with us this evening, but we are recommending him for your consideration to the City Council as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. DeSessa. Are there any additional comments or questions regarding this appointment?
I did talk to Mr. Penny at one of the chamber chats, and he seemed very enthused about it. That's when I mentioned to the chamber that we were looking for somebody for this committee. He seemed very enthused, and I encouraged him to go ahead and submit his application. So, I think he'd be a good member on that committee.
Thank you, Councilmember Blanchard. Well, if there aren't any other comments, then Ms. Prince, would you please call the roll on M-17-12?
Platt Onson?
Yes.
Stedman?
Yes.
Turbrak?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
Blanchard?
Yes.
Kodeckel?
Yes.
O'Dwyer?
Yes. Now, Ms. Prince, would you please read item number three?
Motion Number M-18-12. Matter of appointing Zachary Masad to the Zoning Board of Appeals with the term expiring in July 2013.
Is there a motion to approve M-18-12?
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve by Mayor Protem Turbrak?
Support.
Support by Councilmember Stedman. Ms. DeSessa.
Council, the only thing else I'd like to add is just, again, to provide you with a brief background of Mr. Masad. He is a manager, and he is also an architect student at LTU. Currently, he's a senior. He feels that he has had much work in, in this field, and he believes that he's developed and led teams in various sectors from industrial to hospitality to community projects. He holds a Bachelor's in English and will soon hold a Bachelor of Science in Architecture. He has been a resident of Berkeley since August of 2010. When asked why he belie, or to identify other information that he feels would be pertinent in selecting the City, in selecting him to this position, he indicates in his application that he believes that he would be helpful to the city of Berkeley and that he has a wide range of abilities and experience. He also states that he does not take this position lightly and understands fully the responsibility to his fellow residents and the next generation of residents. He is currently a, an alternate to the CBA as well, Your Honor. We are recommending this application for the Council's consideration.
Thank you, Ms. DeSessa. Any discussion questions on this nominee? Seeing none, Ms. Prince, would you please call the roll on M-18-12?
Stedman?
Yes.
Turbrak?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
Blanchard?
Yes.
Kodeckel?
Yes.
Platt Onson?
Yes.
O'Dwyer?
Yes. Ms. Prince, would you please read item number four?
Motion Number M-19-12. Matter of authorizing the city manager to execute a contract with Kelly Lawn Service to serve as the city's grass and weed cutting contractor.
Is there a motion to approve M-19-12?
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve by Councilmember Blanchard with support from Mayor Protem Turbrak. Ms. DeSessa.
Council, as, as you can see in the memorandum put together by our city planner, Amy Manson, she presents the, the number of, of bids we received, which were a total of six. And unfortunately, the lowest bidder, I, I think there was a, some sort of mistake on, on his application, because it's certainly very, very small, as, as you can see the number. And that was with Brently Development. It's very, very small, and, and we did speak with him. I know that the city planner and, and did mention his error. Unfortunately, we have to accept the bid as, as submitted, and obviously, we are not recommending this bid. It is extremely very, very low. So anyways, we are going with the second lowest bidder, and that's Kelly Lawn Service, which were the lowest bidder. They did meet all our qualifications. They did submit the required noncollusive affidavit, and they also submit the required liability insurance. We have both. As with each of the city's grass and weed contracts, this contract is for one year, and, and at the city's option, we can extend it for two additional years. I know the city, the city planner, Amy Manson, is here with us this evening, so if you have any questions, I'm sure you can help me. Thank you, Your Honor.
Very good. Thank you. Are there any questions about this item? Councilmember Platt Onson?
To the point about lowest bid being really, really, really low, I'm looking at the second lowest bid, and compared to sort of the bulk of where the bids are, it's also really quite low. Do you have any concerns about, oh, okay.
But, but he's done work. He's, he's worked for the, he's done senior lawn cuts for a long time. He is local, and if it's one of those things that at the end of the year it doesn't work out, we can always go out to bid again. So, we, it's a one-year contract, and we're going to give it a shot and see how it works out for everybody, and we'll see how it goes. But yes, we, I'm, I'm concerned it's, it's going to be more work than what Mr. Kelly thinks, because the lawns aren't just always nice and neat as a pin. But this, it, it's within the ballpark of the rest of them, and we'll, we'll see if it works out for everybody.
Okay. And you said that he's done similar work in the past?
He's done, he's worked for the city doing the lawn cuts for the seniors in the city, the low-income seniors. He's worked for them for years. So, we're familiar with his work, and, and we have, he has been solicited before, before this kind of work. This is the time he was the low bid, and he did have his insurance in order, so.
Okay.
So, we'll see how it goes.
Thank you.
Councilmember Stedman?
Yeah, I just have a question about the length of the grass. It's price per square foot for grass eight through 12 inches. Does that mean they don't have to cut it until it becomes eight inches tall?
Correct. That's what the ordinance says.
Well, we would prefer that, obviously, they cut it before that, but it, it gets into the troubled area when it goes over the eight inches.
Right. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
That strikes me as a lot of grass.
Yeah.
We can look at lowering the height if we'd like.
That might be a topic for another occasion.
I know Royal Oak says 12 inches.
Is that right?
That's where they start their cuts, if it's over a foot long. City I live in, it's six inches. So, we're kind of right, steady Eddie in the middle, but.
Any other items for discussion here on this one? Seeing none, then, thank you, Ms. Manson. Ms. Prince, would you please call the roll on M-19-12?
Turbrak?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
Blanchard?
Yes.
Kodeckel?
Yes.
Platt Onson?
Yes.
Stedman?
Yes.
O'Dwyer?
Yes. Ms. Prince, would you please read item number five?
Ordinance Number O-2-12. Matter of adapting an ordinance to rezone the property described as Lot 41 of the Sunny Knoll Farm subdivision from single-family residential R-1D to parking district P-1. First reading set date certain April 16, 2012.
Is there a motion to approve Ordinance 212?
Motion to approve Ordinance 212.
Motion to approve by Councilmember Stedman?
Support.
Support by Councilmember Kodeckel. Ms. DeSessa.
Council, before I give this over to our city planner to just summarize exactly what occurred at this hearing, I would just simply like to inform the public that on March the 27th, 2012, the Planning Commission did hold a public hearing as required under our ordinances to discuss this requested rezoning. And also, I'd just like to let everybody know that as Ms., Ms. Manson indicates on her, on her memorandum, the City Council has the final say on rezonings. And she indicates here, just like an ordinance, the rezoning must have two meetings, two readings before it is approved. If the rezoning is approved and the applicant chooses to move forward with site plan approval for the parking lot and building addition, only the Planning Commission approval will be required. She obviously is here this evening with me to help us address this, any questions the council may have. With that, Ms. Manson, if you don't mind, please give us a brief description as to what this rezoning is all about.
Good evening. Under Berkeley City Code, Planning Commission is required to make a recommendation on any rezonings, and that's based upon five items. They're supposed to look at the existing uses of the surrounding area and the property, the zoning classification, the suitability of the property in question to the existing zoning, the trend of development, and what the objectives of the current land use plan are for the city of Berkeley. Planning Commission held a public hearing. It was advertised, according to state law, and also notices were sent. We did have a number of residents that were concerned about the zoning change. In the end, majority of the Planning Commission did recommend it for City Council consideration. I think Commissioner Dean Smith summarized it very well as he was just thinking about the pros and cons of, and, and Martin, Commissioner Martin Smith also expressed concern that rezonings are really tough. There's always this tension between the residential. We've got great residential neighborhoods, but we've got great businesses, and if you have a good business, you want to make sure it stays in the city. You want it to expand. You want it to thrive. So, how do you accommodate both? And Commissioner Dean Smith talked about the fact that this is an office use, relatively quiet use as far as parking. It's not going to be a restaurant, open at all hours. The applicants advised that by expanding this parking lot and building addition, they will be able to bring 25 jobs into the city of Berkeley. The lots on Sunny Knoll that back to this are relatively deep compared to others in this city, that this is an architectural firm, and its best advertisement is going to be what its building looks like. So, we're not going to have a really marginal building being built. We'll have something really very nice. But this use change is going to intrude on a neighborhood. However, across the street, we have Taco Bell, and we have Oxford Park Towers, which are more intensive uses. And the sightlines of the neighborhood at 2400 Oxford are going to change, so that's something that the Planning Commission, if this rezoning goes through and the applicant moves forward with the site plan approval, that's certainly something as far as the wall design and amenities like that, that the Planning Commission would certainly take into consideration. And I think I've summarized it fairly well. If there are any questions or if I've missed something, please let me know.
Any questions for Ms. Manson? Councilmember Platt Onson?
I don't have a question for Ms. Manson. I, I will add that in 2009, the applicant purchased the house directly behind and rezoned at that point. Forty, a 40-foot lot is not a whole lot to, it's 40-foot, give or take. It's not really workable as a parking lot project, so they have been looking at acquiring property, and as it happens, the next house has been made available to them. I know they've been looking at other properties within the block, but sometimes you've got to go, your site and your project ends up being influenced by who's willing to sell. So, they are looking at the next house on Oxford, and then they will be able to develop a parking lot that's workable. I'm done.
Ms. DeSessa.
Mr. Mayor, just very briefly, just so the council knows and the audience, the applicant is here as well. I don't know if she would like to make any comment or anything. I know I'm putting her on the spot, but, but if you have any questions, I, I know that she is also here. Thank you.
Very good. Well, what we're trying to do here is balance the needs of a business with the quality of life of the residents. And it is a common occurrence in the city, when parking gets to be an issue, that we have to puzzle between two goods, in a sense. And this employer strikes me as one of the largest, probably in the city, or second largest, and adding 25 more jobs and the associated business that will fall from that, the gasoline stores, at the restaurants, and so on and so forth, makes a persuasive argument to me. Other, any questions either for the applicant or with regard to this topic that anybody else wants to raise? Ms. Platt Onson?
I have some thoughts and things. I don't, I, there are residents here as well. I don't know if we want to discuss first and then have them fill in or?
Good point. If there are residents who would like to speak to this point, now would be a good time to give expression to your thoughts. Please come to the microphone, state your name and city of residence, and share your, your views.
I wonder if that's good luck or bad luck to be first. Greg O'Sullivan, 2400 Oxford. For starters, this whole thing got tagged and bagged and bought long before this Planning Commission, the Planning Commission last week got a chance to talk about it, but the resident was telling me how they already looked at a house over on Eaton. So, before there was even a vote here, any consideration, it was pretty obvious what the company wanted to do and was going to do. Now, I'm not totally hip on a whole bodacious wall going all the way alongside of my house going to the back, but first thing that comes into my consideration is they're going to use it for a parking lot. All right. What are you going to do with that parking lot at night? Is it going to stay dark or is it going to stay lit? Do I get a chance to look at four wide-open floodlights every evening? Nobody's really said anything about that yet, and I want to find that out. I also don't understand why nobody looked northward, because if you want, you take a drive on Coolidge Avenue going north, and you see that big old ugly brake store there. Now, he's probably the taxpayer and a God-loving man, God bless him, but you can drive past that place and see all those junky, ducky cars in the back that he's working on sometimes, occasionally, but that's, that place is a hole. And I honestly don't think anybody gave it that much consideration. What's easier, just knocking down an old building, or is it easier to knock us residents out of our way? That's all.
Thank you.
Could you sign here, sir?
Anybody else would like to speak? The applicant would like to speak.
Hi, I'm Margie Simmons, and I'm the applicant. I'm the CEO of SHW Group, who is also the tenant of that building. I would just like to acknowledge Mr. Sullivan's comments and, and potentially offer some information. I have attempted repeatedly over the last nine years to purchase the property, the Autobrakes Shop, and that has proven to be unsuccessful. Even recently, as within the last six months, I've attempted to do that, but we've not been able to reach any sort of conclusion on that. I also attempted to purchase the property at Sunny Knoll, which is right behind Autobrakes, because that, I, in my opinion, is, is unsightly. There is an unfinished garage there. It is not a well-kept home, so I attempted to buy that property as well. It is now for sale, but it is not at a price point where I could make that a useful endeavor. With respect to the wall and the lighting, we are an architectural design firm. We're actually nationally ranked, and we do a lot of projects that are sustainable with respect to their design quality. So, anything that we do will be certainly within the, with the direction of the city of Berkeley, but will also be within the mission of our firm, which is to do quality design, which means it's going to be aesthetically appropriate. And we also have electrical engineering in-house that will make sure that the lighting is also appropriate. So, you can, you can rest assured that I want my employees to be safe, and I don't want to have a lot of light pollution, because I understand that we are adjacent to a residential neighborhood.
Are there any questions for Ms. Simmons? Councilmember Baker?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and good evening. Thank you for coming out tonight to, to talk with us about this, this idea here and, and your vision for going forward. I was curious if you could give us a little bit more background on two things. Your, your current state, you know, the how many employees do you have now? I know mentioned was the potential growth in the future. And the second thing, any other kinds of expansion ideas that you might have that would warrant needing the additional parking?
We currently have about 75 employees, and those 75 employees, we need additional space just to appropriately have a work environment for the 75 employees that we have. I know that there may be some concern that there's going to be additional traffic or additional, you know, a lot of additional cars, but frankly, it's basically to give more room so that we can actually do the addition. So, I'm not even sure that we're going to be filling up that parking lot with more cars, as much as it is that we have to have the additional parking in order to justify the additional space that we need. So, it's a 13,000-square-foot addition to the north. That is the most appropriate place from a site standpoint to put the addition. Does, does that answer your question?
Yes, thank you. I was curious, obviously, not to put the cart before the horse here, but what kind of timing are you thinking about for that expansion? Is it in this, this calendar year or next year?
Oh, yes. Actually, if, if everything goes as we would like, we would very much like to be breaking ground this summer.
Okay. And the, the timing on those kinds of, again, I know that's another topic for another day, but just so we can kind of get awareness, does that project usually take a while to complete, or is that something that would go relatively straightforward?
What would you say? A year? Nine months? Okay.
Okay, so.
February 2013.
Sure, sure. So, less than a year?
Yes.
Okay. Great, thank you.
Councilmember Platt Onson?
Did you consider building up as opposed to out?
Yes. And that's not a feasible solution. First of all, we have 75 employees that are working inside the building, and so, so to be building on top of the existing structure is not a feasible solution, but we did look at that.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Listening to the resident, and I understand his concerns, and listening to Ms. Simmons here, it seems to me that you've made every attempt possible over the nine years, and I know that Autobrakes specialist guy's been there since I was a little kid, and that's a long time ago. So, I mean, he's not going to move. He's not going to budge. The fact that you're willing to work with the lighting, where it won't distract or disturb the neighbors, it seems to me that you've gone out of your way or you've done your due diligence to, to proceed with this project. And agreeing with what the mayor said earlier, it's also going to bring more business to the businesses around Berkeley, so I'm going to support this tonight. Thank you.
Thank you.
Councilmember Stedman?
I just, I, I will be supporting this also. I just wanted to assure everyone that this will go back to the Planning Commission for a site plan review. Is that correct? And that will deal with the issues of lighting in the walls and so on and so forth, so at that time, neighbors can, you know, express their concerns about that.
Thank you. Mayor Protem Turbrak? Actually, I just wanted to hear from the rest of the residents that were here before we kind of, you know, continue moving forward.
My name is Kathleen Carlton. I live at 2429 Sunny Knoll. I'm in that third house in on Sunny Knoll, that's way far back on the lot. Thirteen years ago, I bought that house and paid prime dollar for it, because it was a different market then. I took a big gamble and moved from Detroit with both my children, who are back there. They were already in school here, and I went through losing my own business, going through divorce, working very hard to get here, and I did. I liked Berkeley. I took that gamble because it was worth it. You guys are killing me with this plan. It's 19 paces from my son's bedroom window to where they have the stake in my yard. My home value and equity will be nothing. I'll be left with nothing. I know this is not a big deal to anybody here but me and, and the other residents. Planning Commission made us feel like we were not a consideration but an obstacle, an annoyance. I know this is going to go through. It's going to get steamrolled through. When I move and I get to unload this house, and by the way, if anybody wants to buy a house cheap, it'll be worth nothing, so, you know, when I take the loss, I'll recover from it. The city may not, but I think it's a mistake. I think it's a bad design. I'm going to have strangers walking like 19 feet from my house. There's going to be a dumpster on the fence line. This is bad. It's bad for me. It's bad for that immediate neighborhood. There's going to be four houses affected, none other. The West Warren thing, you can't even compare this to that. It's night and day. day. And I almost didn't come because I feel like it's a waste of my time, because nothing we say has any bearing. So when I relocate, it will be out of Berkeley. You'll lose me.
Thank you. Any other comments from the audience? Yes?
Good evening. Ryan Kotenko, I live at 2399 Sunny Knoll. I work as a design engineer at General Motors, and this type of decision is common in my business, common in any business. It's a simple cost benefit analysis. You need to look at what am I giving up and what do I stand to gain from it? And I trust this council to, to make that type of decision, to weigh those pros and cons. What has not been solved, my satisfaction to this point, is necessarily a realistic expectation of the benefits that stand to be gained. We've heard a little bit tonight from some of my neighbors about some of the negative impacts that this plan could have. When a man who's been living in Berkeley since the 60s suddenly looks out his window and sees not a neighbor's house but a dumpster, that's a negative impact. When a single mother loses all of her property value because now there is a brick wall mere feet from her house, that's a negative impact. And the point has been made, and I think it's, I think it's valid, that those impacts are very local, and that this city council needs to do what is best for the city as a whole. 25 new jobs, sounds great. Increased business for the other businesses, the restaurants, the gas stations, sounds great. But anyone who's been up and down Coolidge can tell you that there's plenty of space for lease. And as I went for a jog this Saturday, I noticed a few things that seemed inconsistent with what I heard in the planning commission meeting last week. As I walked by the site in question, I noticed a sign that said, "Future Building Site, Parking is Available, You Know, Build to Suit." And so if the sign at the site says that they are willing to build to suit for whoever might want to move in, that to me does not necessarily jive with the claim that they're looking to expand. Also, the, the statement was made by a representative of the applicant in the planning commission meeting, that there were a single tenant currently on the site. And on that same Saturday jog past the place, I saw a sign for State Farm, and I've not seen a representative of State Farm here. So I'm not saying that I know everything about the situation. I'm not familiar. There may be resources that you all have considered that I have not seen. However, the claims being made about the benefits, to me as a resident of Berkeley, have not been substantiated to my satisfaction. And I ask that the council make sure before deciding that those claims are substantiated to their satisfaction. Thank you.
Thank you, Brian. Anybody else?
Hi, my name is Marie Kotenko. I'm also from 2399 Sunny Knoll. We live right next to Kathy, where the parking lot's going to kind of invade our backyard there. First of all, I just want to address some of the comments that were made at the planning commission. We were really disappointed and a little bit hurt by some of the reactions that the commission had to some of our comments. In fact, some of them, we felt we were being a little bit patronized. For example, the Westborne reference that Kathy made, just as an example, there were a couple of examples. But just as one example, it was brought up that, you know, the Westborne market up on Larkmore, they went through the same sort of rezoning thing, and they kind of equated that situation to us, where, you know, I remember when we were looking at houses in Berkeley. We just moved here last fall. We looked on Larkmore, and there were some, some listings available. And in one of the pictures for the places, they had featured a picture of Westborne Market, showing that it was right there. And we were like, oh, wow, that's really cool. That's like an asset for them. Whereas now, you know, if this parking lot's going to be there, I'm thinking, this is not, this is not going to be an asset for us. We moved here in the fall, like the intention of starting a family here. We moved here because Berkeley is about community. And, you know, we looked a lot of places for houses in Berkeley. Was one of the few, I think it was the only place where we actually got to talk with some of the neighbors when we were looking at houses. And we were really impressed with that. So I think in the long term, sure, you might gain 25 employees. You might not. Businesses come and go. You look along, like he said, you look along Coolidge, and there's quite a few businesses that aren't there anymore. And, you know, that's really something that I would like you to consider before you make your decision. In addition, it's been stated that the company is about being sustainable. Well, if that's true, I would like to see them maybe feel a little bit more about regrowth and renewal in Berkeley and consider, you know, perhaps refurbishing or, you know, renewing one of the existing businesses that is vacant right now. We don't need more vacant buildings. That's not, that's not what this place is about. And, yeah, so we're really excited to move here, and we're really disappointed. And, you know, it's really hard for us to see raising a family here in the kind of environment where there's a parking lot in our backyard. So, thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Simmons, if you would like to respond?
First of all, the, the State Farm tenant is moving out into another lease space in Berkeley. So he is staying in Berkeley, and he's going to be moving into an acceptable smaller space. With respect to the amount of lease space that's available in Berkeley, the large majority of the lease space that's available are very small individual spaces. We need 30,000 square feet. Okay? So we've looked at that, as far as where else could we move, what else could we do other than build an addition? So we've looked at that. The other thing I want to make very clear is that our firm has been in business for 67 years. We've been in the city of Berkeley for almost 10 of those years. And the reason that we came here is to be a part of the revitalization of the city of Berkeley, which I believe in. The building that we now are in actually was vacant when I purchased it, and we refurbished it and made it into what it is today. So we are all about doing what we can do with respect to revitalization and refurbishment, if that were an option. I feel like we have done our due diligence and made sure that there isn't another option that's available to us. And so this is our, our best solution.
Councilmember Baker.
Yes, thank you. While you're, while you're almost there, just a quick follow-up too. I do appreciate your response on the State Farm. And the other question that the resident raised was the, the sign about the build to suit.
Yeah, that's.
Anything you could comment on that?
Sure. That sign was, was put up basically to see what other tenants might be interested in occupying the space if we were to construct it. But as it turns out, we need all, the entire space. We need the whole thing. So that this, the sign was designed, and it was constructed, and it was put up. When we were thinking that we might actually have other tenants in the building with us, we were actually trying to make it so that State Farm didn't have to move. But we need his 1,100 square feet. So that's why the sign says what it says.
Great, thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember, Mayor Protem Turbrak.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This, this issue is, with the exception of all the financial stuff that we've been going through, this is the most difficult kind of decision for me as a council member, because there always is, as has been mentioned here, there's a little bit of a dividing line between the businesses and the residents, and how close, and, and one encroaching on the other. To me, this is a little bit bigger of an issue than just looking at this specific business in this location and how it impacts the residents in that area. It's setting a precedent on, on one end that I'm not entirely sure that I want, want to set, that is, you know, we just kind of can continue to expand our parking lots into residential areas on a, you know, kind of a case-by-case basis. And I think that personally is a bigger issue. What do we envision for our city, for our residents? Where, where's kind of the line where residency, you know, ends and businesses can begin? And how far do we want, you know, one of those to encroach on the other, depending on who's the view? Now, in this case, we have a very reputable business, a business that is, Berkeley is very lucky to have, and we're very pleased to have. But, you know, we also have residents, and we've had one expansion, you know, in a parking lot, and now we're talking about another one. And for me, it's, it's a much bigger issue than strictly this one instance. And because of that, you know, I'm going to have, I'm going to have some trouble voting for it. And it's not that I don't want to vote for the business. It's not that at all. As I just said, it's, it's a great business. But it's a bigger issue. And I think we need to, as a city, kind of examine this issue a little bit more. And I hate to put people on the spot, and I'm not trying to put anybody on the spot here. But, no, you know what? I'm not gonna, I'm just not gonna. I'll just leave it at that. I'll, I'll keep myself on the spot, and I won't drag anybody else into this. That's my concern. And I think we need to kind of look at whether it's the planning commission, kind of taking a look at where do we want to go as a city? What do we want to look like in the future? How far are we willing, do we want to have kind of a more of a broad approach to how far things can encroach? Do we want to say, no, this is a line, and we're kind of going to stop there and have hard and fast rules? Or do we want to keep it on kind of a case-by-case basis? Personally, I'm not really in favor of the case-by-case basis. I think it, there are too many variables that play into that. This council's not going to be here forever. Other councils make, deal in different decisions. And I'm just not overly comfortable leaving it at that. But I, again, I want to make sure that the residents, or the business first, realizes that I'm not voting against the business at all. It has nothing to do with the business. I'm very pleased, very proud of the business. It's one of the best buildings that we have in this, in the city, if not the best building. I, it's across the street from me. I see it every day. And I'm very happy that it's there. But it's a bigger issue to me than just looking at this one case. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Platten.
I'll thank Mayor Protem Turbrak for saving you all from my extra-length speech, because he actually made a point that I was, that I was going to make. I do like to talk, so I have a couple of thoughts that I put together, not in any particular order. When I look at a rezoning, and this is similar to something that I've said in the past, I think we need to look at what we want the city to be, what we want that particular area to be, and what the absolute long-term impact is of that decision. And a lot of times, we're very reactive based on this sounds very nice, or we want to be encouraging, or they've been good neighbors thus far. But the reality is, is that this rezoning stays with this property forever unless something else is done about it. And while they may be the resident, while, while they may be the business that's there now, 10 years from now, it may be something totally different, and we've left the, a parking lot jutting into a neighborhood and changed the character there. I have been appointed by the mayor to serve on a sustainability partnership committee, and some of the things that we talk about there are ideas of sustainable development. And, and what that really means is, in this type of, what I refer to as a semi-urban environment, we need to look at building up, not out. And typically, if businesses are given a choice, they will build out, because especially in, in this day and age, land is, is cheaper than putting in a handicap-accessible elevator and, and going through some of that trouble. But if we, long-term, want to bring in more business, if we want to have growth in the city, we're, we're landlocked. And the only way that we can bring in additional tax dollars is to have it be denser. We need to go up. So using the land we have to go out with parking lots, especially single-use parking lots, it is not a way to really do that. Now, I'm going to segue into single-use parking lots. So I'm sure you've all attempted to park behind Amici's on a Friday or Saturday night, and realized that because those are privately owned parking spaces, you can't park there, even though the businesses that own them are closed for the evening. So you're stuck with areas of the city where you, you could be doing it, using it multipurpose. You could have a daytime business use parking, and then an evening business use parking. But because it's privately owned, that isn't how it works. So ideally, in a city, you would want more public parking and less private parking, so as to avoid the, the drama that happens in that lot. And so as we continue to look at these options to expand, I think when we talk about sustainability, we need to take a look at using the land that we have very wisely and making sure that, that space can be used as many hours of the day by as many people as possible. I made a lot of strain notes, so hold on one quick second. And, and I am by no means anti-business. I hugely appreciate their investment in the city thus far. I often go around to our new businesses and not only patronize them on a regular basis, but always thank them for being here. I just think that, looking at this particular case, we always use the phrase, "What's best for Berkeley?" And I think, long-term, what's best for Berkeley is to think in a way that will capitalize on the small amounts of land we have and build for the future, as opposed to reacting in the short term. So after all that, I will not be supporting this, this evening, but that's the background on what I was thinking. Thanks.
Thank you. Councilmember Kedekel.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just want to express my concerns that the resident that said, "It doesn't matter what we say, or we don't care." I can look you in the eye and tell you I care. And this is only the first reading. And between now and the next couple weeks, if this were to pass tonight, I will do my due diligence. I will be out there. I will be looking at the properties, and then I will have a decision in two weeks, if this is to pass tonight. I just wanted to let you know that. Thank you.
Anybody else? Councilmember Baker.
Yes, thank you. So I appreciate all the conversation that's happened. And I'm also on the, on the brick wall, so to speak, on this as well, if you'll pardon the pun. The back of my house does but a brick wall in the parking lot, so I'm familiar with that circumstance. In our situation, it hasn't been a particular issue. In fact, it's kind of nice to have it be quiet over there and kind of calm. So I can see that as a potential advantage of such a situation. But at the same time, I also do agree that, you know, these are precious commodities we have here, and we really need to be careful with how we, how we use these. In the recent past, we voted on a different issue, having to deal with a stretch of land on 11 Mile for a building that had been unused for quite some time. And I was in favor of moving forward with that project to, to do something with that property, understanding the, the vision for that, and then knowing that eventually we could revisit that, that zoning down the road as well. Here, we have a different situation. We have a tremendous business that's, that's thriving and looking to continue to grow even more. They engage in the city. As you mentioned, they've been here for quite some time. They have a representative on the DDA. So it's clearly, you know, they, they have interest in moving forward with that as well. I just struggle with, with opportunities for, for parking. And as you guys know, I happen to advocate and help represent our city on, on transit issues. And I see lots of, lots of discussions about walkability and parking and sustainability and bikes and all these kinds of things that, that factor into the conversation. And I'm, I'm really struggling with this one. So, you know, as I think about it, I think about the, the residents that have chosen to, to move to Berkeley, whether it was a short time ago or a long time ago. And, and I absolutely echo my colleague Simmons and say, we, we do care. This is, this is what we're here to do, is to help listen and, and do what's, what we think is the best that we can. You know, what a delightful kind of situation in a weird sort of way, right? Here, we have a residents that love their area, and we have a business that loves their area. And everyone's trying to move forward. So it's, and not to say I wish we had these kind of situations more often, but, you know, that's, that's where we find ourselves. Thank you.
Thank you.
Add a little bit. I, I agree that, that we do listen to the residents. We do care. I was out and I walked the area today, looked it all over. And I'm glad that we have a business like these architects in our area. Glad that they're willing to expand. And I think if we approve this, I'm sure that the architects will provide us with the best-looking aesthetics and lighting situation that we can get, because they're a very reputable firm. And I appreciate their interest in the city of Berkeley.
Thank you, Councilmember Blanchard. Anybody else?
Well, just by way of a final comment, I hope it is clear to everyone the struggle that my colleagues and I have with this decision. And it troubles me that there is an insinuation that the planning commission didn't give it just consideration. I watched the planning commission meeting. I walked the property on Sunday. And it is my belief that each one struggled with this decision, balancing two goods, in a sense, the, the value of the quality of life for our residents, and the value of a superb, nationally-recognized business. They will have 95 employees when this project unfolds, if it does. They could likewise take their 95 jobs and go to Bloomfield Hills or someplace else, like so many businesses do. like so many businesses do. And that is a substantial loss also to the community. I am very sensitive to the points made by my colleague on sustainability. I think we have to appreciate the resources we have and deal with them in the most effective way we can. I think this organization, this corporation, has shown also a sensitivity to sustainability and will provide us with a first-class situation along Coolidge. And so I will be supporting this because of all of those reasons. If there are no additional points, then, Ms. Prince, would you please call the role on ordinance 212 that has a second reading set for April, what, 16th?
Six... Yes, 16th.
16th. Okay, thank you.
Baker?
No.
Blanchard?
Yes.
Kadek?
Yes.
Plaidonson?
No.
Stedman?
Yes.
Turbrak?
No.
O'Dwyer?
Yes.
A 4-3 motion is carried. Now we come to the next item, which is the work session for tonight. Ms. Prince, would you please read item A on tonight's work session?
Mayor of Cheryl Walsh, Director of Communications for the City of Novi, making a presentation regarding youth council.
Mr. Sessa.
Council, first I'd like to thank Ms. Walsh for her patience in waiting for this item, so thank you very much. I know that she's going to give a presentation to the City Council about her program. But before I do, I'd like to ask Councilman Kadek to just give us a quick summary as to why Ms. Walsh is with us this evening and to talk a little bit about some of his ideas that he has for this project. Mr. Kadek.
Thank you, Ms. Vice-Sessa. One of my dreams has always been, and I've mentioned it over the years, to have a Berkeley Junior City Council, some type of youth council. Apparently, we had one back in the '70s when Mayor Ek was the mayor, and I guess somewhat successful. I don't know what happened with that organization then. Many years ago, I was on an organization or on a committee called Communities That Care. Our late Sergeant Rick Penn was part of that, and we were one of five communities in Berkeley that participated in this in the state of Michigan. And we were working with mainly high school kids and what to do after school. And one of the things we found that the hours of 3:00 to 6:00 p.m. are the most concerning hours that we have as adults, as responsible people, because a lot of times, both parents are working, what have you. So what I did, I started doing some homework, and I approached the principal and the two vice principals at Berkeley High School as to how to go about doing something like this. And Mr. Gull, who came from the City of Novi, referred me to Ms. Walsh, who has been so supportive and so kind. We've met, we've spoken, and tonight she is here with a couple of her colleagues to explain how the success in Novi has been with their youth council, and that's why I'm bringing it forth to us. Thank you.
With that, your honor, and City Council, I'd like to ask Ms. Walsh to please approach the council, and we'd be happy to hear your presentation. Thank you.
Good evening, members of the council. Mayor O'Dwyer, thank you very much for having us here. Let me first introduce my colleagues. With me tonight, we have the Director of Public Safety and our Chief of Police, David Malloy, and Scott Chekai, who is a former Novi Youth Council member, recent graduate of Michigan State University. Mr. Kadek is absolutely correct. He met with some of my colleagues, our city manager, and I believe our Mayor Protam. They talked a little bit about the program, and we connected and have shared all the wonderful things that Novi is doing. The three of us, Scott, Chief Malloy, and myself, actually had the opportunity last spring, or about a year ago now, to go to Clearwater, Florida, and present this presentation. We've actually condensed it. We won't make you sit through the whole hour and a half. We've condensed the presentation, and we presented to colleagues like yourselves at a transforming local government conference, received rave reviews. Because what we found is, a lot of communities do have youth councils, but they're not operated the way the Novi Youth Council is. The general notion is it's a run from a Parks and Rec standpoint, and they're planning some activities. Novi's youth council, as you're going to see through this presentation, is very, very different. Are we ready? Please, at any time, if you have a question, please don't hesitate.
Sure.
Thank goodness we bring him, because he's the tech-savvy one.
Sorry, it's cut off.
For some reason, it's cutting off. But what actually, let me give you a little bit of the background. The Novi Youth Council is 21 teen members. They are appointed by the Novi City Council. They actually come in, they fill out an application, just like anyone that's serving on a board or commission. They fill out an application, they need to have a teacher recommendation, and once a year, the Novi City Council interviews all of these students. They come from various high schools. Novi has four different school districts in our boundaries. They also come from Catholic Central, Detroit Mercy, from a variety of different schools. So in 2005, the City of Novi passed the resolution. We had more than 70 students at that time applied. We had no idea what the interest would be. And 70 students came out and applied for what at that time was 13 positions. What we actually ended up doing is, in addition to the Novi Youth Council, we actually added two student representatives to some of our boards and commissions, our library board, our beautification commission, our historical commission, giving them a voice and seeing how some of the other commissions are organized for the city. So as I mentioned, they're freshmen to seniors. One of the requirements is they have to live in Novi. They can go to any school, as I mentioned. They have to have the teacher recommendation. And then they tend mandatory monthly meetings and bi-weekly meetings. We have one meeting a month that is, would be similar to this. It's an actual board meeting, where they come and they have an actual working agenda, they make motions, et cetera. And then they have bi-weekly meetings where they meet in groups to actually work on some of the activities. And I guess, one of the things when this was brought forward, our overarching goal was, as I mentioned, it wasn't just to create a place for teens to go and have fun. We wanted to improve the awareness of the issues that teens are facing in all of our communities, albeit drug use, the intergenerational gap, whatever the case might be. We wanted to improve that awareness. Also, we, obviously instilling civic values and increasing teen engagement is always a desire of the community. Having those teens feel like they're a member of the community, wanting to give back, and then, as Scott, once they graduated from college, continue to be involved in the community. And obviously, it establishes an overwhelming sense of community for the teens in our group. There's some videos attached here, so we'll let you watch.
The Novi Youth Council's been around since 2005. It really started out as something that was a straightforward way of getting more voices and involvement from our students' youth into the actions of local government.
At the time, nobody knew exactly where we were going to go with that idea. We weren't sure if they were going to actually be sitting at council table and advising us on their issues. But the way it's evolved has been so impressive to me.
I've seen some different youth councils and really focus more upon parks and recreation or some more traditional sorts of municipal activities. This youth council has free rein. They spend some time with their strategic goal-setting session, and they map out with their own officers what they want to work on.
They took the initiative to say, "Well, we're interested in doing this, and we're interested in doing that," and letting us know, "This is what we want to do, and this is what we think is important to the community." Looking at our program, and maybe in comparison to some other programs around the country, we give them the latitude to decide amongst themselves, you know, "These are the issues and activities that we want to work on."
It's a way of bringing them all together and getting those different perspectives. It's up to the people and the kids that are involved to find out what they want to do, and it's been very successful for us.
One of the things that Councilmember Much and City Manager Pearson alluded to is, right here, jumping in. We, I think, one of the reasons why our program has been so successful is, we didn't tell the students what to do. Scott sat on that very first youth council with me, and we had just, you know, whiteboards, we had the flip charts. And I'll be quite honest, it was a city council meeting very much like this. Our city council passed the resolution. I was sitting in the audience, and I thought, "That is awesome. Our Parks Director is going to run with this." And the next morning, the city manager said, "Hey, Tag, you're going to be over youth council." And I'm like, "I got a teenager at home. I don't need 19 of them." And I had no idea what to do. But this young group of students, they actually led the way. They had the ideas. They came up with what they wanted to do. Right here, the first three were actually where they wanted to focus. And then the last year or so, we've actually added a Green Novi. But drug awareness and prevention was something that they really wanted to have a strong voice and see the city help partner with the schools on. Bridging the gap for seniors, you know, be it a senior retirement community, a senior neighborhood, they felt that there may be a disconnect with our aging population in the teens. And then eliminate the 13 depression, a very, very unfortunate statistic in our schools. And they actually created some programs. And then, like I said, in the last few years, they'd actually grasped onto being a Green Novi. I turn it over to you, because this is just a hot topic and a great one for you.
Senior engagement. Let's see, during our first session of councils back in 2005, I think the topic came up in our first or second meeting.
Excuse me, sir?
Can we get you a microphone?
There's portable.
So the people at home can hear as well?
People at home can. Oh, wow.
You're on TV.
You know, that one's portable.
It's on a clip. Perfect.
Thank you.
Okay.
Okay.
Bottom line was, Novi has a large senior population, and prom season was right around the corner, and we were all talking about the dates, you know, who's taking who, who's doing what. And then we're like, "Well, I wonder what it's like back then. How was prom way back then when our grandma and grandpas were going to prom?" Well, hey, we have a great senior population, a very enthusiastic partnership with, oh, Cheryl, you're going to kill me, I forgot the name already, Walton Woods. So we had a group session over there, said, "Hey, look, let's make root neers, let's make croissages, let's have a whole themed party." Just a way to get the seniors involved and get us excited to actually branch out to them because, you know, let's learn from their mistakes, per se. See what it was like way back then, and then have this huge bridge and really, or this gap, and bridge that gap. So as you can see this stat here, I had no idea about this stat until I saw this last year, 215, 250% increase in senior population by 2030. As I said, dinner, dancing. Then we added, after the second year, a follow-up breakfast. So instead of mom and dad making pancakes at home after our prom, it was, "Hey, let's go over and have a nice breakfast with the seniors." Boobash was a secondary event, which is added three or four years after, using the same ideas for a Halloween-themed party, costumes, et cetera. There's a video.
The youth council was really enacted as a part of community building and community engagement. And one of the great ideas that they came up with and really forced out on their own and created was the senior prom.
Senior citizens in the community were able to attend a senior prom with seniors in high school. This is really an interesting venue or way to get through to different populations. It's a bunch of, you know, high school-aged young men and women who are able to be a voice or be an outreach to the community.
My first year on youth council was actually the first year we hosted the senior-to-senior prom. And it was really, really exciting to be able to do something like that. We were approached to do an event with them, and we kind of just took the ball and ran with it. It was something totally different, something new. Being at senior-to-senior prom, like you eat dinner, you have like a mocktail hour, you do these things, and you're really making a huge difference in the lives of the people who live in the retirement community.
I really liked the senior-to-senior prom, just seeing the smiles. We were there, and we gave them just an absolutely wonderful evening. They all got, all the women got dressed up and dolled up, and the gentlemen put on their finest suits, and we had a nice dinner, and then danced to music from the '30s, '40s, and '50s, and really just had a great time. And I'm not even sure who had a better time, the kids, ourselves, or the seniors living at Walton Woods.
The youth council is intergenerational. The Boobash, for me, is very personal. It's an event that the youth council started. It's called the Boobash because it's at Halloween, and they go to a local senior center. And the one I'll speak about now is at Walton Woods Senior Center in Novi. In 2009, my father was a resident there. And my father died in January of 2010. But one of the things that he talked about for two months before he died was his fun experience at the Boobash. All these young kids dressed up in costumes, all the city council dressed up in costume, and all these senior citizen residents dressed up in costumes, acting like children, acting like young people, having fun, dancing, and laughing, and talking. The youth council did that, again, their idea, and I can tell you from personal experience, what a great, great time. My father, who was 88 years old at that time, how, what a great time he had. That's personal, and that's something that I can relate to, and I know there's hundreds, if not thousands, of other people that can say the same thing.
One of the things that we deal with quite regularly in the public safety realm, obviously, is the drug abuse, drug awareness, and now a greater focus on drug prevention. So what we're looking at is, how can we team up with our local youth? How can we put together programs? And we obviously know, and particularly in our community, alcohol use certainly remains a really, really huge problem for us. So how are we going to address that? How are we going to get non-traditional messages out to our teenagers? Some of the statistics, I'm not going to go through to you, but the fact of the matter is, a vast majority of our children are going to be using alcohol before they graduate from high school. Unfortunately, we're even seeing now, a vast majority of our children are using alcohol before they graduate from eighth grade. So that's something that's really, really concerning for us. One of the primary goals that we have in public safety is try to bridge that gap between the students, the police officers, the firefighters, the public servants. So what can we do but use them as advocates? How can we send them out into the community to pass that message? Excuse me. And then obviously, to create that relationship between the youth, so it's not an adversarial or one of strictly enforcement. So what we did was, we wanted to make it fun, yet educational. I apologize, I'm just getting over a cold. So one of the first things they came up with was the Addicted to Movies, Not Drugs event. That's where we were able to partner with a local theater, Imagine Theater, which I understand you have right down the road from Royal Oak now. They literally donated for one entire evening, the entire movie theater, so we could bring in 600 kids, grades nine through 12. in 600 kids, grades nine through 12, provide them with anti-drug messages, provide them with the information that we wanted them to hear and what we wanted them to take to their friends. They're locked in for the night. We had several public service announcements that we would film, air on our local cable government channels, and again, a great opportunity for our youth to interact with police and fire staff. We're on, I believe, our seventh year of doing that and that's been an absolute great success for us. You know, Scott, you can skip through the video.
I can reiterate exactly.
Again, a byproduct of that was how can we reach out to the younger kids in our K-6 grades? So we partnered up with...
Hi, I'm Jenny.
We partnered up with another local venue, Lucky's Entertainment, and we were able to host an Addicted to Games, Not Drugs. And that's where we locked in and brought children at the younger age level, again, to establish that relationship, but let them know and let the parents know that we're focused on this at a very young age so we can try to prevent them from being involved in this. Project Sticker Shock was another initiative where we go out twice a year. We go during the prom season and then again during, excuse me, prom and graduation, and then we go out again in the fall during homecoming. And we literally just sticker all the multi liquor packs, whether it's beer, some wine coolers, things like that, letting adults know that if you're going to purchase that and provide that to a minor, that there are going to be penalties that are going to be imposed upon that. It's a great opportunity for our men and women in our uniform division to go out with these young people and for two or three hours, that's what they're doing. So it's been a great opportunity and the success that we have seen in terms of where our young people go and how they advance, Scott being one of them, moving on to greater and brighter things. And I think a lot of it has to do with the partnership fostered with them. I'm not sure what on the horizon is, but I believe it's Cheryl.
You know what, Chief and Scott are both being too humble. Scott at the senior-to-senior prom made relationships with several of the ladies that could not wait for him to come back year after year and they still ask about him. And when he talked about the breakfast, well, in the Boobash, we found that, this one-night connection that the seniors wanted to have with these teens. Some of them correspond back and forth. You know, their families may not live in the area. They may have retired here and their children and grandchildren have relocated and being able to connect with the teens and the community is a great thing. And Chief, the support from he and his colleagues in the police and fire departments, we could not do what we do without them. Through their volunteer efforts, they have, they are over our CERT, our emergency response, our community emergency response team, they come out and give of their own time, the volunteers in the community, and actually help chaperone these events. I mean, Chief himself has been at the Addicted to Movies at 2:00, 3:00, 4:00 in the morning and it is a whole team and community effort that makes this a success. As I mentioned earlier, the green initiatives, some of the students obviously are very talented. They are putting together a green coloring book. They actually want to get a program to where they want to go teach in the elementary schools, the importance about maintaining Novi's environment. These are ninth through 12th graders that actually want to go out. We've talked about how it benefits us and what it does for the community. What does it do for the youth? It's a great experience. It gives them collaboration skills. You have students that are organizing events for 600, you know, attendees that would have never, ever had that opportunity before. It instills creativity and it provides them with a sense of community. Beyond, we have youth council members that have gone to work for the city. You saw one of those gentlemen who is now a firefighter. Scott actually interned in, not, you didn't intern, you worked in our Department of Public Services. We have had youth council that have interned in Washington DC in political offices and, you know, it's a great thing that on their resume, they attend prestigious schools. And then what it does for us, it's building tomorrow's leaders. Scott just, we were sitting here and when you guys were talking about the zoning board of appeals member that you were going to, that you were nominating, he just said to me, I'm going to call you out, "What board should I go for? I'm back, I went to school, I'm back in Novi, what should I, what should I look to be on?" So you have these students that have that sense of community and want to come back and continue giving back to Novi. And let's end on it because it's, can you go back to it? Because it's a great ending, it'll blow me away unless you can't.
Um, yeah.
There we go. We'll end with this.
In working with the Novi Police Department and the Fire Department, I kind of fell in love with the Fire Department. And that's where myself, as a paid-on-call firefighter, I was able to venture off in that journey. And now, being on the Fire Department and past my high school age, I can go back as a mentor and volunteer at some of these events and help the current youth council members and see some of the kids and the awesome programs they're doing. And even as a member of the community, I can go out and I can see Project Sticker Shock. I see the stickers in all the display cases and I'm really proud to be a former member and also to volunteer at some of these events now as a firefighter.
The sky is really the limit for this group. Each year, we add new members and they come up with more initiatives and better ways to do things. It's a journey of personal growth for them and they are not the only benefactor of that. The community as a whole really benefits them.
I think a lot of times, cities don't engage with their youth. They engage with the people who are paying their taxes and they forget that how tax-dollar money is spent really does affect the youth. And if, the best way to keep a community growing and changing is to keep your youth happy because your youth are the ones who are going to come back and live here and raise their own families in the community. Being on youth council, it connected me to the city in a way that I never would have been connected and I love Novi. I love that I went to school in Novi, I love that I grew up there, and I know things about Novi that the average young person doesn't know. I know, I know, I know what the city manager does, I know what the mayor's day-to-day job is.
I bet a lot of these kids will, at some point along the line, get active and get involved. And again, we've, you know, they've had that positive experience and exposure at a young age and I think that will carry on through their life.
It's better than just somebody sitting at the table saying, "I think this or I think that." These are doers, not just talkers. These are people out there doing things, getting involved, being on committees, putting forth their ideas, and then going out and acting on everything. It's better and bigger than I ever dreamed it could be. Every time the youth council is involved, we have a success, every time.
I need to end and tell you that the youth council is given a whopping $500 a year budget. Everything that they do, they go out, they solicit the businesses, they interact with the community, they're out there as an extension of us, raising the funds, et cetera. All the money that they raise at Addicted to Movies, Addicted to Games, we added Addicted to Flips, Flops and Tumbles or something, Addicted to Fun, Flips and Tumbles, Local Gym, all of that money goes back to drug prevention and education. So it's people volunteering their time, they're raising these funds and it's been very, very successful for us. Does anyone have any questions?
Any questions? Councilmember Baker.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Councilmember Kedakel, for bringing this to our attention and for creating this forum for us to welcome our guests here to Berkeley. Thank you for the presentation and for your time tonight. I did have a couple of questions and you've already addressed several of them. I was curious, timing-wise, how long did it take to get something like this off the grounds and, you know, communicate, spread the word, get folks involved, all that kind of good stuff?
Certainly. The Novi City Council obviously passed the resolution. I have all, I've provided, and I hope that Councilmember Kedakel has shared, that we've provided a whole template. It's like a toolkit that you could just start your own with all of the materials. But once they pass the resolution, what we actually do is annually, we send a letter, and the letter most likely is in there, to all the government teachers at the high school, the counselors, et cetera, and we just, we ask them to share and with their students, give them the application and the deadline, the response. We had no idea, like I mentioned, we had no idea if there would be an interest, let alone that 70 kids without any advertising would share an interest. I would say it probably just takes a few months to get it up and running. The interview process, I will tell you, we learned a lot because our city council, here you have these young students that you want to prepare and public speaking, et cetera, and want them to have the full experience. But when you had 70 students coming down and talking about themselves for five minutes each, then going through the council member by council member question, that, we changed that up. I think we were there that first night during interviews for four or five hours. So, you know, you learn, I mean, there's growing pains, but they actually do come down, they're given the opportunity to present and then they have one question that they are asked and they just, they rotate that. And then it was, it took us a good few months, I think, for them to actually mesh and meld together after their first meeting and find their, put their roadmap together and what they wanted to do.
That's excellent. I appreciate the sharing that you've provided in terms of the toolkit kinds of things. I was curious about that, plus like the other kinds of best practices for these types of councils that you may have incorporated. I'm sure that's part of your process as well and it seems like you're contributing some good ideas as well, so.
Well, thank you.
Thanks.
Councilmember Blanchard.
I have just one quick question. How long is the term that they serve? Do you renew the council every year or are they on for two years?
That's another great question. We originally made their term only for one year and we quickly learned that we needed to make them for two years because everyone was going, was on for the year and if they didn't reapply or they were seniors and moving on, we were left holding an empty bag again, having to retrain. So it's staggering and they can serve for two years and then they can reapply.
Thank you. Mayor Pro Tim Tebrec.
Thank you. Do you have any specifics as far as the makeup of the board, say, have to be freshmen, have to be sophomores, have to be juniors, seniors, or is it just, you could have a board of all seniors, for example, or all freshmen? Which could be dangerous.
You know what, we don't have any hard, fast rules. Council, I do believe, gets together and those are one of the things they look at. It does look great on students' resumes, obviously, when you're looking at students that are going to Berkeley High School or a Novi High School. These students want to exceed and excel. They're going on to U of M, Michigan State. It looks great on their resume. I've learned, I don't particularly think that it's a great fit, just in my own personal opinion, to have a student that's involved in 10 other activities. I want someone that is dedicated to the Novi Youth Council. We added to our application, what other activities are you involved in? What is your time commitment, et cetera? Because it is a commitment. You want someone that doesn't just want it on their resume. You want someone that's going to come in and as Mayor Gatt said, you want the doers. I was just talking with a young lady that stopped by our office the other day and she says, "I'm not involved in anything." I says, "I want you." No, she says, "I'm just a B student." I said, "I want you." Those are the people that I want. I want to give them a chance, to give them something that they can feel fulfilled and be a part of the community on.
Before we move on, as somebody who's in education, I certainly think this is a great idea and I'm very supportive of this idea. I do think that as residents of Berkeley, we're very lucky that we already have some very strong organizations that involve the youth, the Tri-Community Coalition, for example, and the Berkeley Huntington Woods Youth Assistance Program. And I think with, you know, with those kind of programs in place, perhaps there's a way that we could, you know, bring those into something like this as well. You know, we've got students that want to step up and be leaders and, you know, when they have to decide, you know, maybe I want to be part of this or part of that, maybe having, you know, I'm looking forward, but we are lucky to have, you know, in the city of Berkeley, it's not that we, you know, kind of ignore our youth and they're just kind of out there. They are very engaged and I think something like this could bring them in, you know, even further, especially to the everyday primax of how the city works and how things actually can affect them as students so that by the time they do get older, as you mentioned, they go off to college and they come back, hopefully to Berkeley, they know how things work and they want to get involved and they want to stay engaged because we certainly need, you know, the youth of Berkeley as the future leaders of our city and we want to make sure that they are energetic, engaged, and excited to come back here. Thank you for coming tonight.
Thank you.
Councilmember Stedman.
Just a question, there are 13 student council members?
Originally, we had thought 13 would be a good, there would, you know, it would be an ad number for a vote, but when we had 70 students apply, we actually made it 19 and then we have two alternates.
Okay, so it's a significantly larger group. How many do you have in your city council?
We have seven city council members. I would be remiss if I didn't tell you, I think the group is very large right now. When we were at 19, I thought it was absolutely fine. I don't think there's any hard, fast set number as to how many that you all look to engage. And then, like I mentioned, we did also add the two places on several boards and commissions or committees. And they enjoy serving there. Our Parks and Rec representatives, we, you know, went through some development of recent parks, et cetera. They, very, very useful in providing a youth voice and perspective on that. As well as our library board, we just built a new library, very active and engaged in that process.
Councilmember Kedakel.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. First of all, Tri-Community Coalition may have a few students, but Berkeley Huntington Woods Youth Assistance is mainly adults, as Sergeant Kelly could attest, and doing things for the kids. So here, we're going to have the kids do for themselves. If Ms. Walsh can explain like adult supervision, like when they're having their meetings, is there an adult there and so forth?
Absolutely. Our community relations office is, we are the liaisons to city council for the youth council. I don't know how your city is structured and how that would work, that would be for you all to decide, but they actually are coordinated through our office. And either myself or one of the others in our office sits in on their meetings, they run their own meetings. They set the agenda, they email us an agenda with the items that they are working on. We actually then obviously print it out, et cetera. But they have a chair that runs their meetings. They rotate how their minutes are developed, so each one of them has the opportunity to craft the minutes and then they report it back out. And then their bi-weekly, the work sessions are actually had by committee chairs. So right now, they're working on the senior prom, which is always in May. So they have a chair of that, actually co-chairs, two of them lead that, and then they have work sessions with the other members.
Mr. Mayor, a couple more questions, please. Thank you. At what time of the year do you choose the board members and when does their term start?
Yep, we actually, the interview process will be very shortly. I believe it is two weeks from tonight. The applications are due at the end of next week and they will be appointed in May and they begin immediately. So we, there is like, there may be an overlap of, you know, some seniors that haven't graduated yet, but that way, for that one or two meetings, we may have, you know, 30 kids before the other ones leave, but that gives them the knowledge and the wherewithal of how a meeting is run, et cetera, rather than just being thrown in cold feet.
Okay, and you're also in a position sometimes, as we would be as a council member, you didn't pick my kid, what happens to the other 51? Do they stay involved? Is there a position for them, you know, as far as that? Do they participate in the events?
You know what, we have not, I have not had any complaints as to far as who didn't make it. It seems like recently, we've had maybe 2025 and we definitely can find someplace. We, through the other boards and commissions, we've engaged them in ad hoc committees through park development, a park naming committee that was just formed, we gave some of those names, et cetera. Our library has a ton of programs that they can always use teens on.
Thank you.
Councilmember Stedman.
Yes, most high schools have student councils that are usually elected by their peers. How do, does this conflict at all or how much unification is there between the city and the school district?
No, that might be better for you, was there a conflict with the student council and the youth council? Because I...
No, I think it was pretty distinct. There were two separate entities. I mean, you had student council, which is in the school, primarily, you know, school activities. If you want to be in the youth council, you were directed towards citywide engagement outside of Novi High School, because we have four or five high schools within the city. Student council was always on Friday mornings, youth council was Wednesdays at 3:00. You kind of had to pick where you wanted to be, either one or the other.
Some of these activities do seem to overlap a little bit with school activities.
Yeah, I would say Addicted to Movies in a sense that we did use student council to our aid to like get the word out in school, like, "Hey, lunch is coming up, five bucks per ticket, yada, yada, yada." But outside of, you know, homecoming, that was, you know, homecoming was school, prom was school. with school.
We have a student resource officer in Novi High School who is an extremely valuable asset with us in helping get the word out and organizing it at the students, et cetera. The schools, Novi High School, which is where the majority of our students are, although they do go to Northville, Wild Lake, and South Lion Schools, as well as CC and Mercy, as I mentioned, they have been incredible at letting the students sell tickets to their events, right there at the school during lunch hour. The student council has worked, you know, in unison on selling tickets and those type of things, and like Scott mentioned, promoting the events, but we don't rely on student council, per se, for any of the volunteer efforts. The youth council members, when I say that they're addicted to movies, these students, they aren't watching the movies with their peers. They're running the event. They're taking the tickets, they're checking, well, we, they don't check the bags anymore, but we have police officers and stuff. They're not allowed to bring anything in, from backpacks, et cetera, bottles, water, anything. These students are actually working the event, while all the other students, the 600 students, are in watching the movies from 10 until 6:00 in the morning. They're cleaning. I have this big, that the theater's going to be left better than what we found it. They're vacuuming, they're wiping counters, they're helping fill popcorn and pop, which the theater gives them for free. They're emptying garbages, they're cleaning restrooms, and then they're putting out pizzas and stuff. These students are actually working, these 19 or 21 students are working the event, you know, with our community volunteers. We don't rely, I'm sorry for an elongated little, but we're not relying on the city or the councils from the student council or to help at all.
Now, who are these community volunteers that you just mentioned?
We've established through the Department of Homeland Security, the Citizen Corps Council, it's called the Community Emergency Response Team. We learned this after the blackout of 2003, when we had police officers and firefighters that were handing out water and were delivering boil water alert notices to our subdivision. So, we started that initiative, and you can get your funding through the Oakland County Emergency Response and Preparedness, and we've trained over, we just graduated our 11th class, we have 252 community members that in the event of a disaster, they can assist us with delivering literature, helping their neighbors, making sure they're prepared. We're big on the first 72 is on you in terms of a disaster. We have to sustain ourselves for at least three days before we're going to get state and federal resources available to us, so we can be more than happy to share that with you as well, but that's a program that we've had running, up and running since about 2007.
Thank you. Any additional discussion in this? Well, we certainly appreciate your presence here, and we applaud what you're doing. I think it is something that is valuable. We must all look to the next generation and prepare them to replace all of us up here someday, or in some other city. Public service begins by the example we set for our families and for our community, and so I applaud this. Now, in terms of next steps for us, Mr. Sessa.
Obviously, I'm not going to sit here and bog down with some of the technical questions that I have, because I have a ton of them, believe me.
I'm most happy.
We have, I'm sure you will, I'm sure you will. I know your city manager very well. He's very good, and I know Mr. Lauria as well, so, good job, everybody. Thank you, everybody. What I'd like to do, Your Honor, if it's okay with the city council, is to look into this a little bit more and talk to the staff on a one-on-one basis and come back with some recommendations. As you can see, I have our Director of Public Safety, Chief Ashman, with us this evening, and I also have our Sergeant P. Kelly here, who's also responsible for working with the high school and working in many of the youth programs that were mentioned this evening. I'd like to sit down and talk to them and to see how it's, how is it possible that we might be able to do something like this, and look into further some of the funding issues that were mentioned this evening. We do not have a Department of Community Affairs. We have a very, very small team, so that's something that obviously I am concerned about, but I think that we may be able to come up with something that perhaps might, may perhaps be similar, and look at creating a Berkeley Youth Council. I'm very pleased with the information that was given. I know that it's just going to take a little time for us to take a look at, not much, but a little, just to get all the data, and I know that Ms. Walsh will be happy to assist me.
Yeah, it's one of those things that we have to get right the first time.
Yes.
And in order to get things done properly, we have to think it through and have the procedures in place. Now, we had learned a lot from the Novi experience, and also from the streamlining and the paperwork that Councilmember Kiddekel has. So, we're off to a good start in that sense.
Yes, thank you.
But personnel is a significant issue for us. We have reduced and reduced and reduced to the point where everybody is under pressure just to do their own job. Well, we certainly need to look at this and maybe get some volunteers and mentors in the community that will want to be part of it.
I'll find a way.
Well, thank you very much for being here.
Thank you.
We appreciate your presence.
Thank you.
With that, then, we'll go, Ms. Prince, would you please read item number B on tonight's work agenda?
A matter of discussing an amendment to the Berkeley City Code, Chapter 1, General Provisions, Section 1 through 7, subsection C, and traffic, I'm sorry, and chapter 122, Traffic and Vehicles, Section 122 through 61 through 122 through 63.5, to adapt MCL 257.625 1C by specific reference, and to readapt the Michigan Vehicles Code by reference. The attorney wrote that.
Yeah, it sounds like something written by an attorney.
You're absolutely right.
Mr. Sessa.
You're absolutely right, Your Honor. Okay, the, before I turn this over to the city attorney, this really falls really quite well in line, a little, with what we were talking about here. I know that the chief here is familiar with this, and I know that our chief as well. Obviously, we're very adamant about addressing the issue of drunk driving, and that is something that's a serious concern to everybody here in the city council. And the city attorney brought this to my attention, and I thought that before taking this or presenting this to the city council for formal consideration, that you would at least have an opportunity to talk about this. Now, this is called the High BAC Super Drunk Ordinance, and I looked up what BAC stood for, and that's High Blood Alcohol Concentration. Is that correct, Mr. Attorney? Yes, thank you. But this is what he calls the Super Drunk Ordinance, and obviously, it's very important, and our state legislature has taken some important steps, and he wants to make sure that the city of Berkeley is in line with those steps so that our public safety officials can do their job accordingly. So, with that, I'm going to turn it over to our city attorney, so that he can elaborate a little further and help us address any questions that the city council may have. Mr. Schneider.
Thank you, Mr. Sessa. This all came about a few years ago, when the Michigan Legislature enacted basically the super drunk or High BAC ordinance. That was, the biggest problem at that time is it basically took the enforcement out of the locals' hands. The penalties were dramatically higher, well, they were significantly higher than the, than what we're able to prosecute as a city ordinance. A lot of cities had a lot of concerns regarding this new ordinance. They understand that it's very good and it's beneficial. The tougher we are on drunk driving, hopefully, the less it will happen. I think that was a clear picture. Main problems were that if we had to take it to the county or the state level, it took it out of our hands. The main part was it took a lot more time with the police department to follow up with these type of cases. It's a lot easier when the city prosecutor, which is me, just handles it. It's easy for the officer to write a complaint or a ticket right on the side of the road or back at the station, and then let the city attorney prosecute those cases. Regarding if it was at the state level, then there's additional legwork and paperwork that has to be done. A detective has to swear to it in front of the judge. It's, I think the chief will be able to outline, it's a lot more hours than normally would take if it was done under city ordinance. The other bonus is if we're able to handle it as the city level, we're able to get more of the money. When it's taken under the state level, the city gets a dramatically reduced share. I know that's not a main concern of the council, I think, but it's something that the council should be aware of. It's only going to be a win-win for everyone in this situation. When I talked to the chief about it, hopefully, he's not going to change his opinion, but he said he was 100% behind this. So, we talked about it for a couple weeks. Governor Snyder just enacted an ordinance beginning of February. I was able to review probably three or four other city ordinances, other cities that have prepared this type of ordinance, and I also included, I think the council is aware, we readopt the motor vehicle code every four or five years just to make sure we don't let anything slip by, so I incorporated that into the ordinance. Lastly, the other part was just, if anything, a little housekeeping, trying to keep all our ordinances all in line with the additional changes that we've had in the last couple of years. So, if anybody has any questions, I think that's pretty much it in a nutshell.
Very good. Any questions for the attorney? Miss that answer.
Pretend I don't know anything about this, which is fairly accurate, and maybe in layman's terms, explain to us why, when they put the original ordinance in place, did they sort of take that power and give it to state and county? And then also, why do we need an ordinance for this?
The cities are only, up until last year, beginning of this year, cities are only allowed to prosecute cases under the Home Rule Cities Act up to 93 days in jail and/or up to a $500 fine. The High BAC statute enables it to go up to 180 days in jail and up to a $700 fine, in addition to some additional community service. So, basically, by the legislature trying to be tougher on drunk drivings, they literally took it out of the municipal's hands. This, right now, without this ordinance, we can still have High BAC cases, but it's got to be done at the county level with the state prosecutor. This just gives us more flexibility, allows our police department to handle on the local level. Did I answer both your questions?
You did, thank you.
Councilmember Kiddekel.
Thank you, Mayor, and this is more of a comment than a question. So, by cutting out the middle person from the county, you would be directly involved as a prosecutor, thus knowing more about the case than the Oakland County prosecutor?
I've worked with our department for a long time, and I'm very proud of that. They're a great department, as you all know. Yeah, basically, I have, I think I have a better take than a prosecutor that's rotated every year or 18 months.
Thank you. Councilmember Baker.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you for that super presentation about this. I can't, I'll really try not to get too super excited about this.
You're still on the wall, aren't you?
Yeah, well, this one, this one, I'm firmly in support of, absolutely, yeah, and all right, my hands are off of that wall. But I do think, since we talked about some of the specifics with this, right, so the legal limit is .08, and so the High BAC super drunk is more than .17, so it's more than twice as much. So, that's, that's, yeah, that's a bad state to be in, no matter what you're trying to do, let alone getting out there and endangering other people's lives as well as your own, so.
And literally, the higher the BAC, the more dangerous they are. I can see why the legislature enacted this ordinance or this statute. I think it's a good thing.
Super, and I think that, what's this, sorry, but I guess to kind of net it out here, so it's, you just got that. Is the, I'm sorry, Mr. Attorney. So, it sounds like the state has a new tool that they can use at these higher levels with higher penalties, and what this will allow us to do is to use that tool as well.
Correct.
Yeah, and I think that's a fine idea.
Maybe just perhaps to give it a little context, the reason .17 blood alcohol concentration is selected is that it correlates most highly with a repeat offense, both in the United States, Canada, and in Australia, and a blood alcohol concentration of .19 predicts a fatality. That is why these numbers are serious, and so I applaud your efforts in bringing this to our attention. Are there any other questions?
Just, it seems like what I've heard so far, you'd like for me to bring this to the city council at our next meeting?
Yep.
That seems to be the consensus.
Excellent. Thank you, Your Honor.
And I understand Chief Ashman was 50% behind this also. Without him pushing me and prodding me to prepare this and bring this to the council, I just think he should get his due also.
Very good. We thank you, Chief. Very good, thank you all. And next item is communications. Ms. Prince, who should be first?
That would be Councilmember Blanchard.
Councilmember Blanchard, you're on.
The only thing I have is I'd like to thank everybody that was involved with the hockey we had a week ago. It was very interesting. The students from Norbin Anderson did a wonderful job. My wife and I are both there. It was very entertaining. We really enjoyed it, so all of you that worked on it did a really great job. All good.
Thank you. Councilmember Stedman.
Nothing tonight, Your Honor.
Councilmember Baker.
Thank you, Your Honor. As a matter of fact, I do have just a couple of quick things.
There's your mic.
Thank you. Earlier this evening, we appointed some volunteers to two of our committees. One of them was appointed to the Woodward Dream Cruise Ad Hoc Committee, and so I thought that might be an interesting segue. In my last communications segment, I spoke a little bit about transit benefits, and I talked about property values, and this time, I thought, giving the segue with Woodward Dream Cruise, what would be the benefit to the Dream Cruise if we were to have public transit, mass transit along Woodward in particular? And as I think about that, right, so the cruise, there's lots of cars, you mentioned enjoy the, all that is with Americana related to vehicles and all of that stuff, what better way to experience the Dream Cruise than right in the middle of it, right? So, rather than having, you know, half of the lanes congested with traditional traffic trying to go about their business in the middle of a Dream Cruise experience, to actually be there in the heart of it, to be able to get on a safe, convenient mass transit vehicle and be literally in the middle of Woodward if it was a center lane design, and enjoy the cruise on both sides, right? There'd be, for the cruisers, there'd actually be less traffic that they need to contend with, there'd be more classic cars, because those that want to get around could do so. There'd be less congestion, and as fans of the environment, or as fans of the scene, the atmosphere, there'd be more fun and activities to get to, just take the whole loop all the way and enjoy the whole thing. So, I think there's some tremendous opportunities for that. And as I think about those few times that I've had to drive during the course of the Dream Cruise, reminds me of this quote by Mac McCleary, who said, "Patience is something that you admire in the driver behind you, and you scorn in the driver ahead of you." And again, that's, the patience is something that you admire in the driver behind you, and you scorn in the driver ahead of you. So, started off with that as a tip number two on the transit initiative. And back to volunteers for just a second, in two weeks from now is the National Volunteers' Week, which is April 15 through the 21st, and we'll have a council meeting that week, so I'm sure we'll be able to speak more about all the great volunteers that we have throughout the city that make everything so vibrant. But I thought I'd use this chance we have now to first raise awareness about this, that National Volunteer Week is coming up here in a couple of weeks, and to see how and in what ways we, as a city, may be able to help provide our volunteers with some kind of recognition or material that they could take with them. I've seen some organizations in Detroit and in other communities that will honor the volunteers during that week with, like, 10% off dinner, or free admission to an exhibit or something like that, if they show like a piece of paper or something that says, hey, I'm a volunteer doing these kinds of things, and there's an incentive or a program to kind of give just a little bit back to the volunteers, they give so much every day to make such a difference. We see the volunteer spirit in Novi as well, and as I think about the opportunity that we have, I know it's relatively short notice with two weeks just around the corner here, but if there was some way... notice with two weeks just around the corner here, but if there was some way that we in the city could, you know, their help with, you know, a little piece of paper or something, and at the same time, our many businesses and organizations that, that do such great work for us and, and serve their customers well, if, if a few of those even would be interested in, in taking a step forward and saying, yeah, we'll be one of those businesses to offer a, you know, 10% off or a free clinic or a scoop of ice cream or something like that to our volunteers to give back, that'd be great. A little bit of publicity and recognition for the businesses is always a good thing. And at the same time, again, to help recognize all the great things that our volunteers do to help keep the city great. And finally, speaking of this city and keeping it great, this Friday, we celebrate a, a key date in our city's history, actually in our village's history. Back in April 6th of 1923, we became a village independent of the larger township. And next month, we celebrate our anniversary as a city. We'll talk more about 1932 next time. And there's, there's so much to, to celebrate and cherish and, and respect and preserve here with the city we have, with the quality of life that we have, the great services that we have to offer. So in these, in these weeks and months ahead, as we, as we think about the journey that, that are, those that came before us here, going from part of a larger township to its own village and then from a village to a city to position us where we are now, there's a lot to fight for here with the city of Berkeley and I hope that, that we have an opportunity to take a step and, and think about what we want to do to, to preserve what we have and see if we can position for the future. So, thank you.
Thank you. Mayor Protem Terbrek.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I want to echo Councilmember Blanchard's, excuse me, statements about the Hockey Day in Berkeley, the first annual Hockey Day in Berkeley. John Nicolai put a lot of time and effort. He spoke to us at a council meeting. Really appreciate everything that he did, getting this together, especially as quickly as this event kind of came together and everybody that helped him out. You know, the, the two games were, were great, but even, you know, more than that, it was a whole day of open skating and learning to skate and the high school hockey team was being involved. And it was one of those, again, one of those signature events that, that Berkeley can, can really be proud of and certainly look forward to continuing that and, you know, making it even better every year. Additionally, we have a number of holidays coming up this week or weekend. Passover begins Friday and Easter is on Sunday and of course, Thursday is opening day. And I hope everybody has a very safe and healthy opening day if you are heading down there. Enjoy, enjoy the game, enjoy the weekend and, and go Tigers. Thank you.
Yeah, Councilmember Platten.
I can never follow the sports stuff. Couple of quick things. First of all, we had an open house for the Woodward Five Sustainability Partnership. Thank you so much for so many of you attending. We were able to get feedback from residents, all sorts of city officials, from the five participating cities in some actionable solutions to balance both economic and environmental sustainability. So you need an, an economy that can flourish as well as an environment that can flourish to, to be successful. So, thanks everybody for coming. I know that they're in the process of taking all of that data as well as the data from the online survey and compiling all of that, so I'll have some more information perhaps at the next meeting. And then, just a reminder that there is this year for the first time since I think I've been a Berkeley resident, a spring tree planting program. And as it starts to get a little warmer, except sorry for the weather on opening day where it's going to be a bit chilly, and you're out walking the sidewalks, you start to realize that there are stretches of sidewalk where perhaps you could use a little bit of shade. And as we're thinking about the mere $55 it costs to get a fairly good sized tree to plant in that easement, so it's a little bit of a more pleasant walk and scenic atmosphere, you might want to reach out to the Department of Public Works by April 20th, that's the deadline. So, if you're planting it in the easement, the actual planting is free, the tree is $55. And if you're planting it on private property, so somewhere else within your yard, the tree is $65 and you will have to plant it yourself or pay an extra fee for the contractor to plant that. If you have priced a tree, this is a wonderful, wonderful price for a good sized tree, so please replant the community. There are some fantastic trees. If you've been out walking, you've seen the, the Cleveland Pears in bloom, they're, the beautiful white blooms. Cleveland Pears are available, also some great maples that have some purple coloring and, and red-orange coloring in the fall, which makes for a nice view year round. So, please consider doing that. Once again, contact Department of Public Works by April 20th. And that's all. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Kadekell.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Some of my colleagues have already mentioned a few things. The hockey game was awesome, the Mayor's Cup. I'm glad the two schools got to split. The sixth and seventh graders won for Anderson and the seventh and eighth graders won for Norup. But it was great to see the children, the students out there and holding up posters and cheering on their teams and everything. I thought that was really great. Something my colleague, Councilmember Baker, mentioned about volunteers, I know Councilmember Blanchard and I have always talked, we're talking about volunteers also, they're our most valuable asset. And I, I like your idea and maybe we can do something for the volunteers because without them, we don't have the great city we have. This Wednesday at 6:30 across the street at the Public Safety Department upstairs, we'll have another Dream Cruise meeting. I think we're still looking for one more resident. If anyone is interested, come by that meeting and see what it's like. It's, it's a lot of fun. Ms. Walsh, Chief Scott, thank you very much for giving us your evening and, and sharing your information and I will be sharing that packet with my colleagues and hopefully we could move forward on this. Who knows who we're going to inspire, the next council member, senator, who knows, maybe the first president from Berkeley. So, I really appreciate it and thank you for all your time. Again, Happy Easter and Happy Passover to everyone. And if you happen to see Judge Wittenberg or Mayor Protem Terbrek tomorrow, you can say Happy Birthday. Happy Birthday, Mayor Protem. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Mr. Sessa.
Oh my God, Council, you guys are always amazing with all, with all the remarks. You know, everything that I've heard today, it just reminds me of, of what a great community our city has and all the great volunteers that we have in order to, to make this happen. So, thank you to everybody out there. I would just personally like to again thank the city of Novi, Chief Ms. Walsh, and, and the young gentleman, Scott? Scott? Thank you, thank you, thank you, thank you. Please don't think that this is something that, that I'm going to take lightly. I'm solely going to take all the research that you've done, all the work. It's, it, like cities, you know how cities work, it just takes us a little while to get there, but you will be hearing, you will be hearing from me and, and my staff. So, thank you very much for doing that. I too want to thank all the volunteers that attended the sustainability meeting and thank you to city council for taking your time to come in. I know that Councilman Baker would have been there, but he was on the other side dealing with the transportation issue, so otherwise, I know he would have been there. It was excellent to have so much representation from, from the city council at that meeting. I'd also like to ask all the, all our boards and commissions, I know that we did send them copies of the surveys regarding the sustainability program, please fill out the survey. Again, I will send you a little reminder, but please send it back to Oakland, Oakland County and we want to hear from you, we want to hear your thoughts and we want to be able to come up with a plan that addresses and meets the needs of our community. If you have any questions or you'd like some more information about many of the things that the city council has mentioned this evening, please visit our website at www.berkley.org. So, thank you all very much and Happy Easter and Happy Passover to all our residents. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Sabuda.
Thank you, Your Honor. I have nothing this evening.
Thank you. Mr. Schneider.
Nothing this evening, Your Honor.
Thank you. Well, I would like to, first of all, announce the Citizens Advisory Committee that we talked about at our last council meeting. Each member of council submitted their two names and, and I submitted three, and this is the advisory committee. Tim Canty, John DeLonge, Tim Godet, Dale Goodcourage, Mark Heron, Paul Honkala, Brian Prentice, Scott Zalewski, Josephine Brewer, Colleen Graveline, Jennifer Malkowski, Drew Pennington, Nicole Smitsen, Marilyn Stephan, Stacy Stevens. They are the 15 volunteers who have generously donated their time, their skill and their talent to help review the financial picture of the city and offer guidance for us going forward. This committee will function like all other committees in the city. They will follow Robert's Rules of Order and they will be subject also to the Open Meetings So, we are thankful to them on behalf of the residents and behalf of the council for the work that they are about to undertake. These are serious times for our community, for our state and nation, when we look at the financial pressures that both the municipalities, judicial entities, and of course, all of us residents as well. And so we have to make wise decisions going forward and we are relying on the good advice and diligence of this committee and we thank them. We had a visitor at the community center last Saturday. The Easter Bunny showed up. It was a delightful experience to meet so many young families who brought their little ones to meet the Easter Bunny, but also who gave expression to their love of Berkeley and their delight at living in our town. Met some people who moved here from Missouri, who moved here from New York in the, in the last year and it was, it was nice to see them enjoy some of the events that are provided by the community. But then, who provides them? The Junior Women's Club, more volunteers. In other words, there would be no Easter Bunny at the community center were it not for a group like the Junior Women's. And so when my colleagues speak of volunteers and their importance, I want the residents to know that this is not casual praise. It is underlining the importance of the volunteer movement in the city that makes our town so rich, so wonderful, such a delight to live in. And so as we go forward this week, Holy Week, to celebrate Easter, to celebrate Passover and to welcome the Tigers back, we want to wish all our residents a joyful and safe week. I should also recognize in the audience, we have a member of the Berkeley School Board, Mr. Mitch Moses, and we're glad that you've been able to be with us this evening as well. Thank all of you for being here, for all the residents over on Sunny Knoll who gave their contribution to the decisions that we are struggling with and, and trying to make and for the, the business owner who was here also to respond to their concerns. Together, we can work through these difficult and challenging decisions to make this a better Berkeley. Thank you. On that note, is there a motion to adjourn?
Move to adjourn.
Move to adjourn by Councilmember Kadekell, support by Councilmember Blanchard. Ms. Prince, would you please call the roll?
Blanchard?
Yes.
Kadekell?
Yes.
Platten?
Yes.
Terbrek?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
Odweire?
Yes.